Good evening. I would like to call the Tuesday, April 4th, 2023 Board of Selectmen's Meeting to order. Can we all please stand for the pledge? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. I don't have any announcements this evening. Is there anybody here for anything that's not currently posted on our agenda? Seeing is none. I have to wait four minutes to go into the public hearing as it's posted at 7:05.
Yep.
What you said this was...
We can do 13.
Was that just, was that the way, the way you sent this, what you just sent? You sent this email a little while ago?
We could.
It's a whole bunch.
Yeah. I can't, just had it on my phone.
Gotcha.
I got it, I'll print it up.
Okay. I'll sign right off on that now.
We gonna take action on that?
Oh, Selectmen's Board, and he wanted me to put an announcement out.
I assume so.
Regarding...
We had to print the warrant.
He's got an investigation into the crushing beer cans in his neighborhood. He's on the lookout for whoever's crushing up Bud Light cans and spreading them throughout Tim's neighborhood. He will find them.
Is that why he's not here tonight?
He's, I think he's collecting the cans. I think it's a baseball game tonight.
Baseball game.
We started, but we're four minute wait.
We're meditating. This is the 10th minute.
That's probably not a bad idea before each meeting, a meditation period.
Reflective something.
Eternal Om.
Om, yeah, Om.
Has anybody got like a meditation bowl or something like that?
Maybe incense maybe around too?
That'd be nice. This building's old, that could be a fire hazard.
That's what happens when you give us four minutes.
Oh, this is gonna go terribly sideways. Any minute now. How much trouble do we cause in two minutes?
A lot.
You didn't bring me a coffee, Mike.
Oh, I knew I forgot something. Why don't you run back and get it?
Five minutes.
Yeah, you can. You can get back in time?
Sure, no, I, no, I promise. You promise?
Yeah. We'll be back in time for the next meeting.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
It fell off the back of the truck.
Yeah, that's what happened. Fell off the back of the truck.
Again?
Yeah.
You said that last time. And there it is, 7:05. So I now can go into our first agenda item, which is a public hearing for the layout of public ways for Stonegate, Cobblestone Lane, and Meeting House Lane and possible votes. So to entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I believe we have Mr. Benoit here to speak on this public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. Matthew Benoit, Director of Community Development. This article has been something that's been brought to our attention for some time. The roadways have been completed for at least five years, since 2018. The owner, or the original developer, son, kind of inherited the last steps of this project, and brought this to my attention when I first started working here. So we got an engineer out there, looked at the site. There were a couple of minor changes that needed to be made. There were some bounds that needed to be installed, there was steel that needed to be done, stolen water bases needed to be cleaned up. And the owner did those things, and our engineer signed off on it. So we brought it to Select Board, I think, September of last year. Come to find out that we don't do this in Fall Town Meeting. So I had reached out to Mr. Afferty, told him what was going on. I believe he hired an attorney who was here. And I'm curious to hear any updates from Mr. Lane.
Mr. Lane out there? How I... Did you see this letter in your bag?
It's from him.
Looking more distinguished all the time.
Cavaliers, they, they'll get there.
I think I passed you, actually. Town Council.
We're letting a town council letter, original title certification for all roadways and easements, and signed and notarized originals of the approved legal documents. Is that all we're missing on this, Lisa? So town council, it'd be our town council letter that we'd have to get. So you tracking that down through...
We just need the documents.
Yeah, as I think I mentioned in my cover letter a couple of days ago, a week ago. There's still a couple of minor title issues that we have to resolve. When they originally did the subdivision, they didn't reserve the rights correctly. So we've done the deed, we have the legal description, we have all that. We just need to get some sign offs from some of the others yet. And I think, I think the statute allows us 120 days after the town meeting to get the documentation done. So I, I think we've got plenty of time. Well, we have a month till the town meeting, right?
Yeah.
Month till the town meeting, May 2?
May 1st.
So I won't be there because, because I'm the moderator in Northbridge, so to be at their town.
You're gonna be busy.
But, yeah, that should give us plenty of time to, to get that together. I know ordinarily we like to have that ready, but unfortunately, the, the time cut away from us, so.
So you won't have by the time of the town meeting?
Well, we may, but knowing what it takes to herd cats, you know, sometimes it takes some time to get everybody. People have vacations, there's banks involved, there's always loose ends, so we'll give it a shot, but I can't guarantee it'll, it'll be there.
So it falls under the man plans and God laughs, right?
Exactly.
Anybody close? Well, yeah, if we can do it in the board for us. Two concerns, or two questions. You could leave it on there, and if you don't have the documents in time, then you could always pass over at a town meeting. So I don't think it's extremely urgent to make that decision right at this minute. And the other thing is I want, I would like to know what town council's opinion is. Is there any, any issues that we should be concerned about by not having those documents after we approve it? In all due respect, he's, he's not our representative, so I would prefer it to come from ours.
Works for me. I don't have any issues with that.
It's on the warrant anyway, so I don't think this is gonna hold, hold anything up at this point. And maybe Henry will get lucky and get the stuff that he needs. And in the meantime, we can get clarification for our next meeting.
Okay.
Follow up at the next meeting.
Yeah, we can follow up.
Just, just to get some information from town council. To make sure that we're not agreeing to something that puts us in a difficult spot.
Works for me. So you just put this on the next agenda?
What do you think, Hal?
So the, if they don't have everything by town, time of town meeting, you're saying don't approve it, town, town meeting, could still approve it?
Well, at least we'll get opinion from town council.
Let's see what town council's advice.
If they don't have an issue with it, then they can go forward, but...
Then that'll be it. So let's keep.
This way it keeps the process moving for the applicant, trying to work with them, but at the same time trying to protect the town as well.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
I think that's fair.
Yeah, no, that's fine. No problem with that.
Works for me.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question through you?
Yeah, you can.
So you mentioned a statute of 120 days to get paperwork in order?
Yeah.
State statute, not, not a local. Something that might supersede our own regulations.
Right.
Curious. That's a good council question.
Yeah.
You might want to just jot that down yourself so you can ask.
Don't do it that way.
Just for clarity.
I can't give you a citation.
For or against, and then we'll close it.
Yeah, so anybody wants to speak for or against us at all? All right, seeing is none. Anybody want to make a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion?
One question. So, so there is no reason to continue the public hearing because of the documents, yeah?
Yeah.
No further discussion, yeah?
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we'll have this on the next agenda, and...
Do we approve? We just closed the public hearing.
Do we want to approve it or carry it to the next?
Well, it's gonna be on the warrant anyway, so...
Already on?
It's already, it's already on the warrant, correct? Yeah, so it's already on there, so I think we'll be fine.
Yeah.
We should approve it once we get our...
Opinion from town.
Advice from town council.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Works for me. So we'll have this on the next agenda with feedback from town council, and then we'll move along from there.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we have discussion with the pickleball league regarding painting the basketball courts and possible votes.
Yes.
Mr. Skinner's sitting back there. Like, isn't he like the face of the pickleball league right now?
He is. We'll call him Presidente.
Would you have worn this red shirt if they had lost last night?
Yes, I would have, sir.
Okay.
Yes, I've been a fan for a number of years.
Did you go to UConn, or?
No, I went to the women's final four back in 2000, and I've been hooked ever since.
Oh, there you go.
Just happened to be a chance, opportunity to go, and it was fabulous. I recommend anybody getting a chance to go to one of those. It's really good. So, but yes, I have a T-shirt on too.
Also UConn?
Also UConn.
So my nephew'd be pleased. He went to UConn, so.
Oh, did he?
Yeah.
Unfortunately, the girls lost, but...
Can't have everything.
There's always next year.
Yes, and we have the Douglas Pickleball Club.
Pickleball Club.
Club.
Gotcha.
How many members are there?
Uh, right now, we have 75. Uh, we have the...
All Douglas or all round?
No, we have about half and half. Right now, we stopped our outside town membership due to the overwhelming response. We only have a limited amount of time slots available. So with that, we capped it off at a certain amount for the out-of-towners, and we accept Douglas residents. If they walk in the door, they're accepted and can come in and play at any time.
Nice.
And if we decide to expand further, then we'll worry about that at that time.
Makes sense. So you have a proposal for us?
So, yes. So we spoke with the Recreation Commission already. Ryan is here as well, Mr. Hogan. And we presented the fact that we would like to paint some pickleball court lines as opposed to using temporary lines onto the gym floor, as well as we'd like to do the same for the outside basketball court here. This would be self-funded. We're not looking for any town funds to do this. We're just looking for your approval to go forward. We had, one of our members had drawn up this diagram. If you could just pass that. Ones for the indoor court, ones for the outdoors. We worked with Ryan, and we're gonna develop, decide on a color in which to paint the lines to make everybody happy as far as that goes. But it's basically kind of what it would look like. Also on the outside basketball court, we're looking to clean up the area, get all the bittersweet out of there, working with the town highway department to straighten out the fence that's there, and clean up the courts, and before we have the lines painted for the pickleball court.
Looks like Super Bowl blocks. It's probably the most explosive sport in the country.
It's the fastest growing sport in America right now. When you've got people like Tom Brady and Magic Johnson and all these people buying into the sport and buying clubs, it's, it means something.
Are you playing, Hal?
No, I've got a place for it, actually.
Feel free to come down anytime.
Okay.
You have a...
Are you a Douglas resident, sir?
I hope so. Unless I've been evicted or something.
That was a joke.
How do you, how about coexisting with the basketball people that want to use the court this?
We've worked out the schedule. Most of our time slots are during the week, during the regular hours, like 8:00 in the morning to 12:00. We do have one Sunday night time slot. We've been working with Mr. Hogan as far as availability during the basketball season. He did offer Saturday nights and Sunday nights to us because that would be times when it wouldn't be used by the children.
Yeah.
So we have worked with the, the schedule as that. He has also given us the opportunity to expand our schedule now that basketball's over, but right now, we don't foresee expanding it because the more time we expand, the more time we have to be down there to supervise, coach, and otherwise set up and all that, so.
How about the, the outside court with some kids wanting to get down, you know, with their basketball and shoot around?
Well, that was, you know, one of the things we were gonna talk about is obviously during school, we wouldn't have an issue. We have the availability during the day, but we'd like to set up some kind of schedule. Maybe we get some time slots for the morning. The kids could have the afternoon and maybe a couple evenings for us to set up, maybe get a letter of approval for those time slots to be ours, so we know that we could use it at those times.
So you're working with the Recreation Commission on...
Well, we were working with Recreation Commission for the inside.
Yeah.
As far as the outdoors, there's no, there's never been any kind of schedule for that or any kind of time slotted for any particular group, but we'd like to have that available to us because what happens is, is we set up sessions. I don't know if you guys are familiar with the sport at all, and in the area, there's a website called Play Time Schedular, in which we, any courts in the area can set up a scheduled time slot, and people can sign up to play, no matter where you live or whatever. Some of the towns limit the amount of people in the time slots. Some just leave it open because they're specific to pickleball courts. And what we do is we have an invite list only for our group, and we invite those members only to come, and then we usually get about, we cap it off at 24 because there's only three courts, four people to a court, with 12 people on the side that would show up and play at that time slot. So in order to get that moving forward, we need to be able to have, you know, I don't want people to show up. We set up a schedule, and then people show up, and there's kids there, and we're fighting for time slots. That's why we would definitely want some approval for specific times that we could run that. And obviously, if, if we're not there and somebody has a net, they could just come out and set up a net and use the spot, but that would be, you know, they would have to understand that it's a shared, it's a shared spot at that point. It's not reserved for certain times. I play a lot in Grafton, and they have specific time slots available for pickleball only because it's tennis, pickleball and basketball out there.
The basketball hoops obviously would stay there.
Yes, the basketball hoops would stay there.
How many days a week are you planning on doing this?
I mean, we haven't really discussed the final, but I would say a minimum, we'd like to have a weekend day in the morning.
No, but during Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday? That we would, that we would definitely be there. It would probably be about three days a week.
Yeah, and the reason why I ask that is, is a tremendous impact to the parking in the parking lot when you're running them.
Okay.
It fills up. The parking lot's pretty full. So it's just a concern about, because it's small, so it's kind of hard to run regular business if the parking lot's overfull. It's difficult for people to park, and some of the people coming to pay the taxes or whatever they gotta do, if they gotta walk their way down. It's a challenge for some of them. And the outdoor one, the only concern I have with that is I notice that quite often, I don't even know if anybody's out there tonight, but the local young adults, teenagers, whatever we wanna call them, use that for recreation basketball, so.
Oh, we do understand that, and that's, that's why we said we're not, we're looking to take every time slot available. We're just looking for some availability of time for our members to be able to play at night for those that still work, and that's why we have a lot of time slots during the day for those that can play during the day.
Hey, I was gonna ask, Ryan, so do you foresee any issues with the outside court? Like, I know right now it's not currently like managed with time slots or scheduling.
So Ryan Hogan, Chairman of the Recreation Commission. Yeah, so it's rare that somebody wants to use that court. They would book it through the town clerk, like all the different facilities here in town. With summer, we did one night a week. I had a girls clinic out there. Basically, if there are kids shooting around, you know, I've come, I think we went six to seven, between 5:30 and 5:45, I'd show up. I'd say, hey, guys, we got the court at six, you know, you have another 15 minutes. I didn't have a problem. I wouldn't foresee them having any problem for two or three time blocks, you know, they would reserve it through the town clerk. Now, they may run into the, especially in the summer, they may run into the issue where they're gonna have to tell the kids, hey, we got, we, we've reserved the court, and it's our turn to use it. I don't anticipate that being any kind of problem. We did not have any problems past summer with that.
If there's an issue, they can just handle them with rackets, get them addicted.
They could.
Well, I'm currently involved in a program in Blackstone Valley Boys and Girls Club where they're trying to get the kids involved. I'm gonna be coaching over there. They're starting that now with middle schoolers, trying to get them involved in the sport.
I have no issues as long as recreation is sort of looking things over within your bailiwick.
Yeah, so we met with them two weeks ago now, and we did, unanimously approved both the use here and here. We did come to an agreement that the basketball president, who's currently myself, would agree with the pickleball group as to what color we're gonna use for the lines. So once that comes, we get to an agreement on that, we can move forward. And then we had no objection to them using the outside. They did talk about a little bit of additional fencing. We just recommended...
I was, I was just gonna bring that up.
Okay, well, through the building inspector, because we, to be honest, none of us in the Recreation Commission have any expertise into that, so.
Thanks.
Yeah, we're just looking to put in additional netting. I don't know if you've ever seen sports netting at soccer fields and stuff like that, something that catches the balls. We're looking into it financially. We're not sure how much it's going to cost, but we're looking to put something up a little higher to keep people from having to go down in that embankment to, to get balls and stuff like that. You know, if, if that's the case and one goes awry, I guess we're buying another ball. But, you know, we don't want anybody going down that hill to try to collect the ball.
Well, it doesn't look like we'd be in a pickle if we approved this.
Oh, there it was. There, I knew I could count.
I was thinking.
I knew I could count.
I just have one more thing to add. I'll let you vote on that if you want first, if you'd like to do that. I have the opportunity possibly to get an inmate work crew here from the minimum security in Shirley to help us clean up that area, but I'm just, I don't wanna just show up with a work crew. I'm pretty sure I have to, want somebody to be involved to, to give me approval to do that.
I never turned down free help with cleaning up Ryan and the municipal center at all.
As long as it goes to the administrator, we'll be perfectly fine.
Exactly.
Make sure that...
I'm still working on the, to make sure I could get it, but I wanted to ask first. I didn't wanna just show up with an inmate work crew.
No, if you do end up coordinating, coordinating that through Matt, please.
Okay.
So the only concern I have is the parking. So if it becomes an issue, then we'll just have to address it and just understand that going into it, that's all.
Yeah.
Not trying to be difficult, but it...
Well, we can be sure.
...viewed it on many occasions that...
We'll see how it works out.
You know, we can, we can work with our group as well to make sure that anybody that's coming, if we're playing outdoors, that they park far enough away to keep these spots available.
Yeah, we'll figure out something. I just want, just bring it.
We'll, we'll work with, we'll work with you however we can help, because we wanna be, you know, thankful of the space that we have and being able to utilize it.
Works for me.
I'll move approval of the request for the pickleball.
Alter the striping?
What?
Alter the striping?
Yeah, and working in tandem with the Recreation Commission.
Yes, yes, sir.
Second.
Excellent. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing is none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like those drawings, or would you like me to take?
Can I keep one copy?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Stuff between hands or a fellow.
All right, we're just gonna pass over three, so you don't have to press for the moderator.
So, that's up to you.
I mean, we can still discuss.
One other, what other time would you have to review the warrant in public?
Well, it's...
Well, we have that under five.
Yeah, under five. We're still reviewing and signing the warrant. This was just the discussion with the moderator.
Just the discussion as to how you, would you like to orchestrate it?
We can do it however you would prefer, Mr. Woj. All right, so we're gonna pass over three. Number four, vote on public safety compensation chart, miscellaneous compensation chart, and legacy agreement positions chart.
So at your last meeting, Mr. Chairman, you voted the compensation reform package as it stood at that time with our full-time positions, management office assistant and public maintenance. We have other charts, and we have, from time to time, place employees, typically seasonal, temporary, or other special employees on these charts. And that's miscellaneous. So those, your election workers, transfer station workers. What I did with the miscellaneous chart this year is typically, we in the past have called it miscellaneous grade zero. Personally, I kind of find that a little bit demeaning, calling somebody a grade zero.
Not demoting.
I mean, it's ground floor, and there's grade zero, right? And that was always the, the federal minimum wage or state minimum wage, state. And in this case, I just took the state minimum wage and put a 2% cola on it, so the, our town minimum would be $15.30. And it went from five grades to four. We currently don't have any employees in grade three or four. We're mostly using the bottom two steps, grades, excuse me. The public safety compensation chart is a little bit of complexity here, as I've broken it into two pieces, and I want to ask you to revote the call firefighter chart, okay? Because that needed to be updated because it was originally set up to be a fiscal 23 adjustment, and fiscal 24, we wanted to bump that up by 2%. Basically, to reflect cost of living adjustment. But you'll notice that structure is similar. What's added there is I needed a place to put the salary rate for the public health nurse. Nurses command fairly decent hourly rates in the market. Public health nurses do as well on the municipal side. This was the chart that had full range that allowed Agneska's salary to be put into a specific slot. So last year, she was at $40. This year, there's a 6% raise on there to 4240 to try to catch her up. The one piece of the public safety chart that will not be reflected in a chart itself, it's gonna be reflected in individual positions that we are maintaining, is for our dispatchers, you know, our emergency communicators. That union is in the process of negotiating with the town. I think what we need to do, and after consultation with Labor Council today, is we're gonna budget for at least some of the salary increase that we are intending to push in the direction of that union. We recognize there is no argument here that they are very, very much underpaid, and we want to catch that, those employees up. Chief Megliano had suggested starting with a 6%, putting the 6% in the budget, which is what I've done, okay? So that, those positions that were in the past were on the public safety chart. We anticipate moving them out and giving them their own union contract with their own grid. So for now, we're just gonna give them a cola of 6%. And then as soon as the collective bargaining agreement is finished, which hopefully will be either right before town meeting, right after town meeting, we will do a retro and we'll put it on town meeting for the fall for ratification. I'm still confident that we can move fairly quickly through that discussion. It's just, we've gotta have the time to do it. I don't like doing rush negotiations. I think it's disrespectful to both sides. We need time to think and discuss with our respective teams and then come together and discuss together. discuss together. And that, almost always, by definition, is going to take 10, 12, 15 hours of time. And rushing it doesn't make it better because you want it right away. Going methodically through the contract and setting it up right the first time will probably go a long way towards improving the relationship. So that's what I'm suggesting for the public safety compensation chart. Then we have some legacy agreement. The town has been through any number of changes over the past decade or so where there were a significant number of, I'll call them fundamental alterations to the way work was done at town hall. So in 2012 in particular, uh, the legislature passed the special act that created the administrative position as it is now and the finance director's position as it stands now. And there were also changes made in the finance department. So you had an elected tax collector who went to being an appointed person. And the deal was that that person would be held harmless at the salary that they had as an elected official, and there would be COLAs, but that the, there would be no change. When we did comp reform and we looked at the role as it is cast now, it will not be on the management table. It will be on the office assistant table at the highest grade. But that would still represent a pay cut for the person who's a long-term employee of the town, loyal employee of the town. So we're going to hold that person, continue to hold the person harmless and pay COLA of 2%. And the same goes for the conservation agent, who basically that position was a full-time position up and, up until the 2000s, uh, you know, early 20 teens. And then it was both that position and another were basically downgraded to halftime. And that's where you've got a halftime building commissioner and a halftime COMCOM agent. So again, if we rated this position and set it up, it would probably end up getting a pay cut. So we're just going to hold the employee harmless and do a 2% COLA. So those are the things I need for you to vote to put on the warrant. That'd be effective with town meeting approval.
Yep. I just have a question. And it's just out of curiosity. On your other compensations, you had up to, uh, five-year steps, up to 30. This one has five and this one has 10.
Right, because those are the existing charts.
Okay.
So I'm not going to alter them.
All right.
The five that you, uh, you're pointing out is public safety.
Yes.
So a lot of those roles are call firefighter roles. And in discussion with the fire chief, we felt the best way to structure this table would be to give the chief of the department the opportunity to give people merit raises, but to not lock it into time. Because you could be a call firefighter for five years, be very busy. And for the next five years, come to basically no calls, just barely enough to keep yourself active. Well, why would you automatically get a step?
Right.
For that? So this will be at the discretion of the chief and it'll have to be written evaluation, written justification to do a payroll change notice to give that person more money for coming on a regular basis. That's why it was said that way.
Yeah, that makes sense. So you need a motion to approve the changes as presented? Motion to approve the changes as presented?
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing is none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Review and sign annual town meeting and special town meeting warrants and possible votes. So here. Do you want me to read through the warrant itself?
You can go through and, Mr. Chairman, once you get to the budget, we can pause and go through the budget.
Okay. So I'm going to start with the special town meeting warrant. Um, we have Article One, which is the budget transfers and amendments. Article Two is the snow and ice account transfer. Article Three is prior year bills. Article Four is police cruisers. And Article Five is the fire command vehicle. So we can go through. Do you want to go through the transfers and amendments? This is pretty standard housekeeping.
It is, unless Gene wants to comment on it, I'm going to jump to Article Four.
Unless you have a specific question, I think they're pretty much standing.
Yeah, it's kind of old hat.
Just a reminder, at this time of year, I talk with all the departments and try to get them from where they are today until June 30. We try to present any deficits or any issues that they had during the year at this town meeting so that the town has a chance to vote on it. So this is a standard type of article. Each one has their own unique circumstances, but I don't think there was anything. We try to take care of it within the department. You'll see a decrease in highway wages and you'll see an increase in admin expense or highway maintenance. So we try to take care of it within each department. Same with tax title and tax taking. But unlike other departments, this town votes at salary expense, salary expense. So town meeting's the only one that's allowed to do this, other than the last two months of the fiscal year.
Gotcha. Any questions? Mike or Al?
Nope, I'm good.
All right. So you wanted to move to, and Gene, that was, you know, like I said, it's just housekeeping.
Yes, yeah. After meeting, snow and ice is where, um, the $75,000 was the approval that they have received so far. I talked to John. He feels comfortable that that, I don't want to say it, we had a major snowstorm. So that, that's where we are today.
Live on the danger side of that.
Just, um, the prior bills, again, I think I'm finding this a little more challenging since COVID because we find some vendors, um, were lax in, you know, people working from home. We've tried to adjust for that, but we did get these bills after September, I believe, where they require a town meeting vote to be paid. They were not encumbered at the time. They were, um, they were not turned into the business office at the time, so they have to go to town meeting for approval.
Go ahead. We use interpreter services?
This is for school for spend.
Have you read any of your emails?
Wow.
Hey, I couldn't read this.
Did you feel that was?
But it was Latin. It was very erudite. Arm of the room, pecan.
All righty then. I have no questions. Thank you.
Want to keep her up here? We'll have a question later.
But if Gene wants to stay, she's always wanting to sit at the table with us.
Thank you.
Part of the team.
Just going to stay here for a little bit.
That's fine.
Okay.
All right, so you wanted to talk about Article Four, the police cruisers. So $115,000 from free cash to the purchase of two new police cruisers.
So if you don't like this idea, it's Gene's idea. If you think it's brilliant. I think we cooked this goose for a really long time. We started off having a conversation quite a while ago, and that was really in the context of ARPA, of giving the police department the opportunity to grab some cruisers that were available on the lot and try to get current pricing and availability and not wait until July 1st. And, you know, ARPA wasn't really the ideal place to take those funds. And as we're getting closer and closer here to spring town meeting, Gene had an epiphany and said.
I hear the bus coming. Yeah.
I think, I think my way, I would have put it, she finally agreed that it was a great idea to do this.
It had to be a week.
We, we have, but we have the opportunity to do, this is not really crazy gymnastics at all. It's a switch. So there's, there was up to today, $115,000 in the operating budget for cruisers because we expensed cruisers. And when we stopped purchasing, we buy them a couple at a time. We also have this year, and this is the last year this would happen, is a transfer of free cash to the school department as part of the settlement of their teacher contract. And this was a pledge that we had made, we found the minutes today to verify other facts about this. But we said we would increase the schools, the local share, 2% year over year for all three years of the contract in order to allow the school department to build up some additional operational flexibility. And for the first two years of the contract, we would transfer free cash to close the cap. So the first year was 300 some odd thousand dollars. This year it's $167,000. So Gene's suggestion, and I agree 100% and recommend it, is that instead of using the free cash, the cruisers, um, instead of putting the cruisers in the operating budget, put them on the special and use free cash to purchase them. And then the operating $115,000 that we would have used for the cruisers will almost completely offset the transfer of free cash in the operating budget by $115,000. So it's 115, we're just moving it to a different meeting so that when.
It's just a timing issue.
Right, so on May 2nd, May 3rd, whenever Chief Megliano has the opportunity, he could go buy cruisers that we know are already on the lot. So give me that one.
Basically, we can move faster.
We can move a lot faster. And then in the school side, we're still giving the subsidy that we promised. And the operating budget won't, we're not artificially reducing what we spend because we are in fact just going to spend it on a, a different line item. Is that clear? What we're trying to do?
Makes sense.
Okay. The next article is the command vehicle for the fire department. We originally, I think, were operating under the assumption that that would go on the annual. Maybe the feeling was, if we're going to do the cruisers on the special, we would do, we would put this article for a vote of town meeting on the special as well.
Makes sense.
And my thought process is that, you know, you have the same people attending both meetings. You know, it's going to be voted the same night, same people are in attendance, you know, so it's not like you're choosing one meeting over the other. Especially with Article Five. It's, you know, it's going to be voted.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we were doing the cruisers. And again, it gives the flex, because of the delay in receiving vehicles or being able to purchase the vehicles, it gives us two additional months. If the vehicle's deemed necessary, then you want to have that time to purchase it.
Makes sense. That works on the, anybody have any other questions on the ASTM?
Nope.
Works for me. So that brings us to the annual town meeting warrant, which we have 13 articles on this one. The report, the FY '24 budget, salaries of elected officials, BBT, transfer station enterprise fund, water sewer, the PEG access, recurring business, personal bylaw, adoption of revised FY '24 to '29 capital improvement plan, zoning bylaw, street acceptance, and sewer asset management project. Pretty straightforward. Are there any of these articles that anyone feels we need to take into? Obviously the budget, I would assume.
And Article Eight for me.
And Article Eight, recurring business.
Correct.
That's shorter, so you want to do that first?
Um, basically, it's a change of staff in the town. So we had 53 and a half for planning, zoning, and conservation because the town no longer has a town engineer on site. We are using a 53G instead of 53 and a half. We are retaining the 53 and a half for conservation. So 53 and a half is for staff currently employed by the town that do work and we bill the applicant. A 53G is for an outside consultant. So because we don't have a town engineer, we are using an outside consultant, which is a 53G. So we're removing the other two for zoning and, um, planning.
Okay.
Want me to pass this around? I'm going to pass it around.
Yes, sir. Brings us to the most fun time of the whole year, the budget. It's the most wonderful time. Because who doesn't love talking about the budget?
This will be in lieu of my report though, so you get to skip my report.
Two for one special.
This is what I've been working on.
This is in lieu of.
There's nothing much else to talk about.
In lieu of the administrator's report, here is our budget.
I'll have one other thing to say on, when we get to nine. First of all, of all, at the level of generality, we somehow, or I shouldn't say we, I somehow find a way to make a $33.4 million budget complicated every year. I just find a way, I guess.
It's okay.
This year, the primary initiative was compensation reform, and we just finished it with your approval of the last, at your last meeting of most of the major components of it. And in the last week and a half now, we've been trying to get one last number, which is a very important number. We'll talk more in detail when we get to it. But Maya is always late getting us our property and casualty. And for a larger town, it's not the big deal. But for us, it is because, you know, it's, uh, it's a substantial part of our operating budget on the municipal side. And therefore, if there are swings, and this year there is a swing, it changes the underlying math. We had to go back and clean up a whole bunch of things. So the budget is balanced, and I'm going to round up to the nearest tenth of a million for the sake of the overview. The budget is balanced at $33.4 million. Call it 33.477. Of which, we will raise 19.3 from the levy. In that figure is included a very conservative estimate of new growth of 250,000. That's far below what we've been seeing for the past four or five years, but, um, the assessor explained that we've had some, you know, pretty significant additions each year because of electric company upgrades due to the solar installations. And he wanted to treat those as non-recurring and just go back to permits in the pipeline for a new home construction and other smaller permits. So new growth is set at 250. There are about 2 million in excluded debt, but that is included in the budget, so that's part of the 33.47 million. 2 million in local receipts. We have increased our estimate around local receipts this year. I think I've explained this once already, to accommodate, uh, we never actually lost that much due to COVID. We're not a tourist-driven town, so we don't have that gap in our revenue stream. So when Gene went back through it, she felt like we could, uh, go back to really the pace that we were on. So that's an even, roughly even 2 million for local receipts. The next 10.2 million we raised from state aid, about 8.9 million of that is Chapter 70. That state aid is offset by a point four, so it's a negative point four in offsets. That's going to be choice out primarily. We're going to take half a million from other funds, including about 385,000 from ambulance, the restricted receipts account for ambulance. And then we're going to hold about, uh, point one million for the overlay. So when you sum all that up, it's about 33, 33.4 million. General categories in the budget, general government, so that's going to include most of our town hall functions, um, town clerk, technology, finance, the selectmen, and administrator's office, community development. That's going to, roughly, $2 million. Public safety, which is police, fire, ambulance, building department, civil defense, animal control. Total public safety, 3.7 million. Public works, cemetery, all of the highway functions, streetlights, landfill maintenance, total public works, 1.2 million. Health and human services, just about point three, so a little over $300,000. Culture and recreation, just about the same, a little over $300,000. Education for Douglas Public Schools, including the school bus contract, 16.7 million. Blackstone Valley Regional, 1.6 million. Norfolk Aggie, just about 350,000, so call it point four to round up. Total insurance, employee benefits, and court judgments will be about 5.3 million. That's just the general caption. We have no court judgments. Total debt service is just about 2 million, which offsets it on the revenue side for a total budget request of 33.477. I'm going to go through very quickly. You'll see in the fifth column over, there's a. You'll see in the fifth column over, there's a caption that says, "Change from fiscal '23." So the total change from fiscal '23 is 620,901. So that's the bottom line on the very last page. So from fiscal '24 down to fiscal '23, that was a 620,901 change, total net, because there are accounts going down as well as accounts going up. As you go through this spreadsheet, you'll see the impact of compensation reform. So the reason why we had this conversation for so many weeks and then had the capstone last week is because that's going to drive most of the change in the budget. The budget instructions were for directors to hold their expense accounts at right about a 1% increase year over year, so that all the remaining funds could be put towards people. On the first page, there's an adjustment in the selectman's office. This reflects an attempt to bring the administrator's salary up to what you would advertise to hire somebody brand-new tomorrow with no experience, and a contractual increase for the executive assistant. Moving on down, we have a contractual increase for the wages of the salary of the finance director. In the assessor's office, we saw, we see large negative numbers here. So for the principal assessor, you recall, we had a significant transition, it took a long time. So we had originally budgeted a substantial amount, because we thought we would be hiring somebody, and we would also have Beth McKay staying on to help train that person, so there was an overlap in that salary. Then when Beth did retire and we didn't have the position filled, we went out and hired an outside firm to provide us with assessing services, a bare minimum of assessing services. But those things were expensive, so the assessor's office is going to come in about, just about 22, almost $23,000 less than fiscal '23. Treasurer-collectors office, that's salaries from comp reform. The expenses going down on the information technology side, this is primarily a transfer of the e-permitting software costs. So the license for e-permitting will no longer be in IT, it's going to be in the building commissioner's budget. So his budget will go up, his budget's going down. The town clerk, that's wages, 24,000. The town clerk's salary is in Article 2, so she's an elected official. It was rated at an M2 Step 20, because she's been here for a very long time doing this job. So this is a significant raise there. Building maintenance, not much to talk about. Community development, again, it's wages. Economic development wages, this is the adjustment that you made to Mr. Manerick's salary, so there's $41,000 there. Moving down the page, police wages, $214,000 increase is driven by the labor contract, which reads that in the first full fiscal year after being reaccredited, there would be a step pump for police that would go to the base. It looks like the committee is going to meet and re-accredit the Douglas Police Department in June, which means the next full fiscal year starts July 1. We are going to budget for that eventuality. In addition, there are a number of steps. But as you can see, the chief actually reduced his expenses by $9,700, so he kept within the program. And then we did the transfer of the cruisers into the special. Fire department, relatively modest changes here. These wages are being driven again by collective bargaining agreement. Expenses on the ambulance side are up, but that is also why I increased what we're taking from the ambulance restricted receipts account from 370 to 385, was to pick up this increase in their expenses. Building department, we have wages. Again, that was an adjustment made by the select board, and this expense item went up due to the transfer of the licensing for e-permitting over to this budget account. I am holding tree warden to a bare minimum of 10,000. I had to do this to balance the budget. Typically, when we get to the fall, we have new growth and we have free cash certified, that's when we actually put a lot of money into this account for John to spend on trees. So with that reliance upon fall town meeting, I didn't think we necessarily needed to budget all 20 right away, we just budgeted 10. The expenses in civil defense reflect two significant costs for the public safety radio system. One is the ELAN or the fiber network that connects our transmission sites, and the other is the annual maintenance contract, which we will sign for five years, which includes a whole battery of testing and software updates and all the rest of it to be held on a regular maintenance contract. So we will have eyes on our equipment. We believe it's money well spent, but that's all being shown in civil defense, where it is my intention to put all of our emergency communication, both personnel and costs, into this item, because it spans the full gamut of the town's operations, not one department or another. Animal control is up significantly, and I can put the explanation for this under Chief Mutmene's signature, the chief in Uxbridge. This is, as you know, a regional cooperation, significantly greater level of service, because we have 24/7 coverage, 365. Last year, we got a regionalization grant through Uxbridge, and it offset the cost. The grant has gone away, we now have to bear the full costs. But last year, we bought the vehicle, this year we're not buying any vehicles, so there's a little bit of an offset. Are there any questions before I go into public works?
On the Cubes project, is there any revenue before the project is completed, aside from building permits? Is there partial assessed value we can pick up on that, or is it outside the-
A question, Mr. Chairman, best addressed to Chris Pucka at a special conversation.
Yeah.
He has given me actually his revenue forecast model, which I am going to incorporate now into this budget forecasting model, so we can see what this really is going to mean for us. Right now, it is anticipated that the building would be fully built-
Right.
-by this fall. So it means that when he does his assessment, he's going to pick it up. If not in total-
For '24?
Well, it's-
25.
25.
That's the, the problem with new growth is it lags, right?
Yeah.
So you're going to see it for-
Nothing for '24, though, if you're going to get-
I don't think so.
Yeah.
So that's a, that's-
Into partial, right.
This budget is so critical, because it's the last really tightly constrained budget you'd be looking at. Any other questions? Public works, we have two substantial salary changes there. As you recall, we're moving Adam Furno from an hourly rate as the working foreman, and we're basically changing that title. And the superintendent is a long-term employee of the town, will also be seeing a salary increase. That explains the $38,000 change. I'm going to skip now to the $15,000 change, the board of health. That is, again, driven by moving an employee up to the management scale. However, there is an offset, the part-time employee in that office is now going to go fully over to the transfer station, in terms of where the position is budgeted. So we kind of did a switcheroo there to keep the impact down a little bit. Council on Aging, that's all wages, some of that's related to the fact that after we raided positions, Patrice is a long-term employee of the town, and we did some changes with her staff. Veterans benefits, the agent wanted me to keep it at 50,000, but there was no reason to do it. He hasn't spent anywhere near 50,000 on benefits many years now. I'm going to hold him at 40. It's a prudent thing to do. Culture and Recreation, we have some minor changes. Library wages, those are long-term employees, so comp reform had a pretty significant impact on the library wages. In the schools, we gave a 2% to the Douglas Public Schools for $285,615. We're also transferring over a one-time subsidy of 165,067 to finalize the settlement of the contract from two years ago, and transportation went up by 123,979. Those are big numbers. So there's been a lot of movement on the school side. When you, it shows it as a decrease, because it's less money being transferred, but it's still, you know, close to over $400,000. Of the 620, right, is going to the schools. BBT is 64.5, it's actually not a bad sum for us. So today's shocker, pain in the keister actually, is the MIA increase, a 10.8% increase. My draft budget had that account going up by 6%, so it was a little bit jarring to get that much.
Budget increases is scary.
I had budgeted 501, so we were at 535, so we were scrambling today to pull things together. So what I've done is I pared back the number of plans that we budget on the health insurance piece. I typically do five full-time family plans, I'm only going to do two. I upped the number of retiree plans that we're going to hold to about nine, but it is not the amount I would typically hold as a cushion for census changes. Couple of reasons why I feel comfortable doing that. You know, I have a monthly meeting, and I see the census, because our board is constantly monitoring the financial condition of the trust fund. Our census was going up, but our census has come back down. So in the last two months, we are back to the level we were at the beginning of the year after having gone up. And we also have a very substantial surplus there. At your next meeting, Mr. Chairman, what I'm going to be asking you to do is formally pen a letter to the board that I'm chairman of to release your equity buy-in back to the Douglas. It will close the free cash, and the objective, I think, that Gene and I have is to start to really make significant contributions to OPEB. The rating agencies like to see that, we want to stay ahead of that, and it is in appropriate use. So your policy as a town has always been that when you close your health insurance surplus, surplus would go to OPEB. But now, because we're in the trust fund, and it's no longer immediately in our control, we have to go through a couple of extra steps to get it back into, into OPEB. Debt service, not much change. So that pretty much concludes all of the changes in the budget. So, sitting here now, it seems really simple, but this was a real pain. Real pain in the neck to do.
You feeling better now that it's done?
I feel better now that it's done, but I think it's on a firm foundation, too. I mean, I think every year, we have a couple of things that we wish we didn't have to do, because it would be cleaner if we could just raise and appropriate, right? And that would always be easier. But Douglas has limited resources, and as we try to keep up with the demands of providing service, we need to be thoughtful and do a couple of extra things. But there's nothing spectacular here. We are still not using free cash for operations, so-
That is such a nice thing to hear.
Yeah. It's been actually longer than was projected. I think when, during the override conversation, the idea was this thing had a five-year life, and the, being able to not use free cash for operations is only going to get you about halfway into it, and you were hoping to build up enough reserves to glide through the last two years of a five-year period. Well, now we're well past the end of the five-year period, and we're not touching free cash at all. So I think it's testimony to the impact of, you know, a pretty good economy, some robust home-building activity, and now economic development. Any questions?
So we kept our promise to the town about the two and a half, that we would close the, close the gap.
It's always a good deal.
Turned out to be a good, good thing to do. We had it. It was close.
Any questions, Mr. Finop? Nice work by all of you. I'm sure I know it's budget season, it's never fun for you guys.
Ready to start the next one before we go?
Exactly. You're going to get to take a, you're going to get to take a break, vacation, and a nap, and you're right back at it.
I'm already penciling what I have to do in the fall town meeting, so let's enjoy this for a little bit.
All right. You had said you had a comment for number nine?
Article number nine, or number nine down here?
Yeah.
I'll wait until then. You're still doing your warrant.
Isn't that part of the warrant?
No.
Oh, you meant nine on this?
Yeah.
Never mind.
Gene, was there anything you were going to go over?
No, I think-
This is a question.
This document will look a little bit different, because BBT will come out of here, because it's its own article. So you'll see the number won't be 33.4 any longer, it'll be reduced by the BBT article.
Got it.
Transfer station, water enterprise fund, and PEG access are voted separately, so you don't see them as part of this, because they're enterprise funds, and Gable has its own funding source. Those are the only comments I have. Unless you have any questions.
I don't.
Nope.
Just need a motion to approve and sign it, right?
Make a motion to approve and sign the special and the annual.
I do have one question, though. I didn't see the legacies on the charts. Do we have to insert them?
They're not on the charts, they're just a freestanding. So last year, when we did those rates-
Yeah.
-for deputy chief and call captain, elected presented the same way, which is just text.
So I don't know that they're in here yet, so we'll have to add those.
Yeah.
Okay. I did write no fully, so I just didn't know if I missed it. I didn't know. Capital, did you want to talk about capital?
Well, unless anybody has any questions about it. Kind of burnt out.
Your motion.
I think if you have to say it one more time, it's-
Okay, I'm done. All right.
Make a motion to approve and sign the annual town meeting and special town meeting warrants.
Both of them, yeah. Second.
Excellent. Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. We're on to accepting a grant for the fire department, the EMPG grant, impossible votes. This was for the Commonwealth, for the fire department. It was received from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It's the FY '22 EMPG grant. So it was awarded on 1/9/2023, and the purpose was for the purpose of, purpose for the purchase of ballistic gear for the fire department. They received $2,900. Expenditures will be approved by the fire chief or his designate, and it was submitted by Assistant Chief Manning.
Just to, the question on the grants, we have, there's an article on recurring business that the town is authorizing a selectment to accept grants, so in the future, we won't, I guess, just the board, we won't be going to town meeting once this passes for accepting?
I think that's part of recurring business every year.
Yep.
So town meeting votes that every year, so that you can do this kind of-
Okay. All right.
Yeah.
Sorry. So you need a motion to accept the grant?
Yes, sir.
Motion to accept the grant.
Second. Made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So we're on to-
This again.
ARPA, our favorite. Revote for, it's a revote for the water sewer depot street project and CLA consultants and possible votes. And it looks like we have to reduce the incumbents by $208,583.60 for the water sewer depot street water project, right? That's what it says here.
Yeah. Whatever it says there, trust them.
If you agree. And then CLA, we need to encumber $4,000 for professional expense.
So moved. Second.
Made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Meeting minutes?
Part of these minutes, I recuse myself for, so can we approve these minutes tonight?
You can smoke.
No, I'm just asking, so I don't know the answer.
If he's recusing himself on it, then...
Oh, just a portion of it, because I wasn't here for the 61A conversation. I started looking at the back of this, so do you need Tim here to approve that?
So we'll pass over him.
Rather than to chop it up, let's...
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I just happened to see the 61A, so I just wanted to make sure that we didn't get called out on it.
That was easy. I get out of reading all the votes that you put in.
Is there one more?
All right. The Douglas Electricity Aggregation Program update.
Were you going to speak to this, Lisa, or is that... What are we doing with this? I mean, I have something to say about it, but...
You can go ahead and say, it was just for them to review, because the bids are coming up.
All right, so we are, it doesn't hurt to do the whole song and dance every year. The Town of Douglas Energy Aggregation Program is part of a much larger buying group through the Serpent, Southern Regional...
Land and Economic Development.
Yeah, something like that.
Down in Taunton, I think they have...
Yeah, it's a big group. We do well typically. This is the aggregation program, though, and I just want to make sure everybody understands that. This is for residents, and the rates that all of the residents who opt in to the aggregation enjoy. And the bids are going out late April, will be opened about two or three days later. Energy bids are different from a lot of our typical 30B activity, we don't really advertise. You know, the agency puts out the demand, there's any number of bidders that respond. Typically, it's a lot. Quite a few bidders will respond, with different rates and different durations, and good energy. And the town administrators, serving basically as this overall board, we each get one vote, will vote which, you know, the recommended, usually the recommended rate and provider. And that is occurring because there is a very specific burst bubble in the market, call it. When we came into the winter, because of the war in Ukraine, and because of a number of other supply constraints, there was a tremendous amount of panic in the market, because a lot of natural gas stockpiles were at a very low level, and they weren't going to be able to be recharged. So if we had a cold winter, the price of natural gas for energy, for electricity generation, would have gone through the roof, because there would have been a lot of demand for home heating purposes, not much for electricity. Cue the music for the warmest winter on record. So everybody hustled, 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 hustled to get more supply, and then there was no demand. So now, phew, so the air's come out of the market, so to speak, no pun intended, but there is a unique point right now in the market where natural gas is very inexpensive, so the electricity for a specific period of time, that'll be generated by natural gas, is quite a bit cheaper than it is right now, if you are a grid customer, and you see what you're paying. There are some jurisdictions that are paying 41 cents just for generation, just for the electricity supply. And we've been locked in here with good energy at 10.7.
Seven.
So we'll see if we can beat that. Now, the Town of Douglas does not participate in its own aggregation, for a very specific reason. We can be more nimble than the aggregation, so we are timing our purchases based on the advice of Tradition Energy, our energy consultant. And they just got us into a very good window. So we've already done this, we've already gone out to bid for the Town of Douglas and locked in supply for the next five years. So the next two years at 9.2 cents per kilowatt hour, and this is before we apply our solar credits, and for the next three years after that, at 12.2, which basically is stealing electricity at that point.
Seems strange that we're in a group, and yet we're doing our own...
We're going to, we often beat the group.
Yeah. But we're still, or is that a backstop then, more the group?
We wouldn't use our energy aggregation, because we would be leaving our own contract.
But if it went higher than that, we'd go to the aggregation, is that right? It's like, no?
No. We're locked into our contract. So right now, though, the group, the Serpent's been at 10.2, we've been at 9.2, so, for one penny per kilowatt.
But in the future, we could, yeah.
In future, if the Serpent were consistently outperforming our own market operation, then we would go to the Serpent, but right now, it doesn't...
So just a backstop, basically?
I suppose that ultimately, we could always opt into our own group, but we have to...
All right.
This is an opt-out program, so if you, you are in the Serpent unless you have filled out a piece of paper that says you want to be out of it.
Give me a...
And once the contract is renewed again, anybody who's participating now is moved over to the new program as well.
Okay.
Is it a one-year contract, or?
Not the three years, isn't it?
I believe we bid this out. If we don't bid it out annually, we are only bidding out blocks of one year at a time. I can't recall exactly why it's structured the way it is. But just, just by way of comparison, you know, this fall and winter, just the energy supply portion of someone's bill could have been close to 25, 26 cents per kilowatt hour. And then you almost double that for the distribution transmission piece. So by being in the Serpent, you took that 25 cents, and you made it 10.2. So less than half. So it really, there, when it does pay for itself, when it does pay, it truly pays for itself, for people to opt in and stay.
Anything else?
Nope.
We're all good?
Yeah.
No report for you, sir?
Well, there's a lot of things going on. I really think the budget took a lot of energy out of me and the whole team, so I think we're glad we're done with it. Just leave it lay at that, and we'll catch up on the 18th with everything else.
Sleepy dog.
Okay. Are there any open session topics not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance of this meeting? Seeing as none, with Tim not being here, we're going to move the executive session to the 18th, so we can have a full board. So I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Matt?